Let's get this meeting started. Today is February 11th, 2025, and I will be calling to, I will call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting. So Karen, will you please call a roll?
President Figaro called here. Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Alder Govinderajin? Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford? Alder Uguere? Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'm present.
Alder Curry?
Here.
She's there.
Okay. You have quorum.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Yeah, there she is.
Did you hear me?
Yes, thank you. We gotcha. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. So do I, can I have a?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? John and John? Is there any changes to the agenda, I mean, to the minutes from last meeting? Any concerns? I, oh, I need to open the Zoom thing. It's no, wait, I don't need to open it. It's over here, hiding behind my computer. Give me. I don't see any hands up. So is there an objection, objection to record unanimous vote in favor of the minutes? Don't see any hands up. So the agenda is covered, is passed? The next item on the agenda is the public comment. Okay, we don't have any registers for today's meeting. So that moves, moves us to disclose disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the City Ethics Code. Are there any disclosures or recusals for the items on the agenda? I do not see any hands up. So that moves then into items for, for consideration. So the first item in the agenda is Legis star 87138, NGO Chapter 33.134, Duties of the Common Council Executive Committee. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
This is a discussion item, sorry. Okay, so this is a discussion item, and I think I have the discussion on this one, correct? Yes. All right, so the recent, the this agenda items, I'm going to go ahead and introduce you to it. It's just a link to the Common Council Executive Committee ordinance is specifically related to the discussion we had on the last council about sending referrals to CCC that are only, that are not sent to other committees. On the last meeting, we had two referrals that went, one to the Sustainability Committee and the other one to Public Safety Committee, and we were a little bit confused as to what, how that happened. So the intention here is to update you on that. We still following the ordinance and those, the prior situation, the, the investigation or whatever you want to call it, the results of that was that the item originally was put in the agenda to come to CCC and during the meeting, the council meeting discussion, there were requests from alders to add additional committees. At that time, someone, me, anybody, the mayor, anybody, any other alder should have raised the point that this item was sent to CCC and we should have dropped the referral to CCC and send it to the other committees, but that didn't happen. So after speaking with staff, we came up with a, a process where anytime a staff wants to send something to CCC, they should contact the, the president, whoever that might be, so they can be on the lookout for that particular agenda item, be alerted, and kind of avoiding, avoiding that double, you know, breaking the ordinance by, by mistake. So that's, that's what's something we caught up on the last one, and we, again, this change is a little bit new, so it's hard for people to remember these changes. So in the future, the president is in charge, since the president is in charge of reviewing the agenda, that would be one more checklist for them to verify if there's any CCC item recommendations and then keep an eye on that for the floor when new referrals are done. Anybody else can also call it out, but I just want to minimize the responsibility, but definitely welcome anybody to point it out at the floor if that were to happen again. And that's all I have for that one, and I, I see questions. So Alder Harrington McKinney, you can, you are muted already, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. In your statement, you said that there was, anyone from the committee could have requested that this item be sent back. I, I can't restate exactly what you said, but the reason that I had my hand up is, is that we did have this discussion and we did have the discussion with the attorney, and he participated in it. And the outcome is, is that if it was referred by the common council, we could not disperse of it or send it back. So an attempt or a question was raised if we could do exactly what you said, but we were told that, that we could not, that that would not be in order. So I just wanted to make sure that we were, we were accurately recounting what had happened with the series.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Alder. Thanks for the clarification. No, we are not recounting on that particular, those two ordinances because it already happened, so that we cannot have a correction. The only correction is to just get them through the system. What we're saying, what I offered last time is to investigate why did that happen and to prevent it from happening again. So for future, from the, for the future CCC referrals, the, whoever is checking the agenda, which in this case is the, the president of the council, should look and see if there's any CC referrals to keep an eye on those, so we, that doesn't happen again. So that's what I'm, what I'm talking about. What you're, what you're bringing up to our attention is that the ones that are already in the system, we cannot change those. They have to come back to us because the council already made that recommendation. But what I was talking about is how to handle this, how to prevent that from happening in the future. Does that make sense? So I, I mean, again, I'm going to try to say it in very simply again. So we had, we have two ordinances that are coming back to CCC, and that already happened, and we cannot change the outcome of that. That's over with. We discussed it on the last meeting, they will come back to CCC, we resolved the issue, we send it back to, we send, we send recommendation to council as requested, but that should not have happened. So to avoid that from happening in the future, we put in a safeguard in place that whoever in staff sends a, creates a change or an alder, whoever, should come, should let the president know that there's a CCC recommendation, and we will work on that to ensure that it's, we get an alert before the meeting, so during the council meeting, if someone wants to refer to somebody else, we can remove the CCC referral. So if Alder District Eight wants to post an agenda item that is referred to CCC and says, I want this to be sent to the Sustainability Committee, nothing prevents that alder from District Eight to say, I know this is referred to CCC, can we drop CCC and put sustainability in there? Because the rule says only send to CCC what doesn't go to any other committees. So it's, it's all of our jobs to keep track of that, but since there's too many of us, I'm putting the first stop at the president's responsibility to look for those items and keep an eye on them. So there's nothing we can do about what happened in the past, we're just providing direction on the future. Any other questions on this item? Okay, so that then take us to the second agenda item, sorry, gotta open this again, there you go. Agenda item 86825, amending section 33.16, 33.016 of the Madison General ordinances related to alder appointments to boards, commissions, and committees to change the appointment terms. And for this, this one does require a recommendation, so I do need a motion on this item to put it on the table.
Motion to approve.
Move to adopt, and a second? And thank you, Martinez Rutherford or Rutherford Martinez? I'll get that right too eventually. Thank you. So Martinez Rutherford seconds that. Already, so for this item, I don't know how we want to, I don't know, if staff wants to start or the, or the, maybe, maybe staff should, maybe staff can give us an overview of the item?
Point of information, clarification?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is the motion before us to approve the amendment?
No, the, the, right now, we have on the tape, well, I don't know, Mike, what are we approving here?
Right, so the, the item on the agenda is the, the ordinance amendment proposed by the mayor to change the term of alders on committees, for their service on committees. You have a proposed alternate by Alder Tischler that the committee can discuss or take up or, and make a recommendation on, on either of those proposals. But I understand the current motion to be to approve the original ordinance amendment that is sponsored by the mayor.
Is that, is that clear, Alder Curry?
It is, thank you.
Okay, Alder, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not clear to me exactly what is before us and what we will be voting on and what is up to discussion. I thought that we just resolved the first item that you spent time explaining, and now we are at the second agenda, so I'm very, I'm very confused, and I want to slow this down until I better understand exactly where we are and what we're voting for.
Okay, thank you, Alder McKinney. Alder Tischler?
I guess, there we are, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to know if I need to make a motion for the alternative, if that's something that the, that a sitting board member needs, committee member needs to do.
A committee, a committee member will have to do that.
Do you want to address Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, just a second. Yeah, thank you. So, well, is that all?
Yeah, just, just for clarification.
Thank you. Already, so currently, we are in agenda.
I'm sorry.
Alder Curry, go ahead.
Point of clarification, maybe for city attorney? I thought sitting alders were part of all but couldn't vote on committees, does that include making motions?
He didn't make a motion, he just asked.
But he could.
No.
It's my question of clarification.
No, he cannot. Only, only committee members can make motions, second, and vote.
Okay, but we can participate in discussion.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Curry. And Alder Harrington McKinney, I'm about to address your question, do you have another question before I go?
Um, yes, I just want to make sure that I'm in the queue to put on the floor the substitute from Alder Tischler, and I want to make sure that I'm stepped through that to do it in proper order, and if I'm out of order, please correct me, Madam President.
Yeah, she can move, but I wasn't sure if she understood.
So, so you can move it, so then you, now are we, are we clear on where we are in item number three, I think it was, or do you need to explain that again?
No, no, I'm clear.
Okay, good, perfect.
I was confused.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to move the amendment for, yes, Legis star 86825, and I will need a second for that, to move the alternate. Alder Martinez Rutherford is second in that, okay? Correct? I saw her hand come up and then go away. Okay, good, perfect, thank you. Too many screens. Already, so having said that, I was going to ask Attorney Haas to give us an overview of the original versus the second one, so I don't know if it's in order to do both. So can, can you give us an update, overview of what is the ask here? Alder Harrington McKinney, do you have a question?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your hand is up, thank you. All right, so, so yeah, so Attorney Haas, can you please guide us through what these ordinances are asking us to make recommendations on?
Sure, so as I think everybody knows, the terms of alders are being staggered starting with this upcoming election, so that causes a ripple effect on committee assignments. So we have been discussing this at the staff level for a while, and as a result of that, the mayor put forward what you have as the, the main motion here, which would be to make all, all appointments of alders to boards, commissions, and committees to only last for one year, or if they're made in mid-year, they would expire the following April. And that's really the substance of that proposal. I think the, kind of the basic thought behind it was that that would allow all alders theoretically to be appointed to all committees, rather than having some alders not allowed to have even the possibility of being appointed to some of the committees because of the continuing alders taking up those spots. Now, that obviously means the mayor's office would have to do appointments on an annual basis, and that can be a chore, especially given all the competing commitments that, that alders have to different committees and when they meet. So then, moving to Alder Tischler's proposed alternate, would continue to have alders serve for their entire term, or at least for their service on a committee to expire at the end of their term. And so it's important to note that that would mean, mean a couple of things, and Alder Tischler can certainly chime in, but it would mean that, I think the thought, one of the main thoughts behind it is to allow for some continuity, because the ordinance would also require that any committee that had more than one alder on it would be required to have an alder of an even-numbered district and an alder of an odd-numbered district to be appointed. So there would be, once the terms are staggered, there would be theoretically one alder continuing on for two years and one alder coming on after one year, and then, and then staggering that experience, so to have some continuity amongst the alders on the committees. Also, we struck the existing language that talks about the BCC terms being concurrent with the alder term, because it is possible that you could have an alder appointed to a committee during the middle of their term. And so regardless of when they were, would be appointed, the, the term on the committee would end at, at the same time as the term of the alder ended. Now, there, there still may be a possibility of an alder serving a one-year term on a committee. For instance, if an alder is elected in 2025, well, let's say 2026, when staggered terms are completely in effect, that alder could be appointed to a committee in 2027. But then that service on the committee would end in 2028 when the alder term expired. So you could have a mix of serving on committees for one or two-year terms, but the idea would be that, I think in normal circum, or for most cases, you would be serving a two-year term on a BCC. So I guess I can stop there, see if there's any questions or if Alder Tischler wants to add anything to that explanation.
Alder, Alder Tischler?
Yes, yes, thank you, President, for giving me the opportunity to, to speak before this committee, and also thank you, Attorney Haas, I think you summarized that, that very well. You know, when we commit to serving our constituents in the city at large for two-year term, we rearrange our, our lives to best serve the public. Oftentimes, we, you know, we miss important occasions with family, friends, but it's something that we know signing up for, that we are going to be in this position for two years. And I just don't think it's, you know, as an alder, I think we should not have to worry about the committee assignments being changed in midterm for us. Now, given the, the staggered terms of alders, the alternate that I put forward kind of helps to ensure that when we do have, as Attorney Haas said, when we have two or more alders serving on a city board, commission, committee, we have at least one even-numbered alder and one odd-numbered alder. Now, this, you know, will, will, I believe, provide some continuity. You know, when I first started and joined on a, on a committee, I benefited from having an alder who had already been in this, on that committee for several, several years. So even, I think the continuity of having that overlap will eventually provide not only support for those new alders coming in, but also for people who are serving on these committees from the general public. They're serving on these for, for several years, and this gives them opportunity to, to get to know the, the alders, and also gives the alders a chance, especially new ones, a chance to understand kind of the, the rhythm and the flow of, of that committee. And I guess I would just say that, that to me, the, you know, the choice is, is kind of clear. You know, as alders, knowing that somebody else will eventually hold their seat, we have to ask, you know, do we, do you want your appointments, and do you want the future alders who sit in your seat to be on there for one year, or do you prefer to have some stability for a, a two-year term without, without the risk of having your, your assignment changed midterm? That's, I'm, we've, there's going to be some complications with this, I think it takes some adjustment, and I guess, but what I think this will also do is lead, lead towards the idea that, you know, examining what committees best serve having two or more alders on it. I think that now we're going to have to probably have a discussion about what to do with alders who are serving for those committees where we just have one person appointed. And there are also going to be situations where we're not going to find a good fit. And so we had a very good discussion this morning about that, that issue. And so we, we put in on the alternate some language at the very end, that, that really comes back to the, to us, to the committee, for, you know, to decide and to have a discussion among ourselves and to, you know, to decide if three-fourths of us decide, you know, who should be best served to be on that committee, or to waive this rule on a case-by-case basis, where we might have situations where we'll have two odd-numbered alders or two even-numbered alders to make, to make the best fit. But again, it will just be going forward, there would not be an automatic reset every year. And I think this, what this will really do is, is allow us as, as alders to spend more time. to spend more time thinking about the committees that we're gonna be on as we're running for election or rerunning again. And also, kind of put us in a situation where we'll be discussing among ourselves, who is the best fit? Who comes into the committee with knowledge and who also has a willingness to learn? And I think that's something also that's important. That's all I have to say, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak to this committee.
Thank you, Alder. Attorney Haas?
As Alder Tischler mentioned, we just made this last change this morning, the very last sentence of the alternate, says that if no alder is available from an even or odd-numbered district to fill that slot, the council can confirm an appointment for any alder to serve in that slot with a two-thirds vote, which is essentially a suspension of the rules. We kind of left it up in the air as far as what does it mean to be available. As I understand it, it may be that no alders are volunteering for that committee or agreeing to serve on that committee. It may be that, you know, it's a very complicated process, as you probably know, for the mayor's office to get all of these appointments together in a short period of time and to match everybody's schedule. So it may be that the mayor is just unable to, you know, find an alder from the appropriate numbered district to serve in a specific position. I will say, just because the, you know, just because the mayor's office is not represented here, some of the other factors we discussed, I think the, and I don't know that there's any perfect solution to this. As Alder Tischler, I think, alluded to, there's pros and cons to every solution we might have here. But I think one of the concerns about the proposed alternate and having, for the most part, two-year terms on committees is that a new class of alders coming in in an even-numbered year, for those committees that have two alders, may be limited to filling, you know, only those terms that had expired and not have access to all potential appointments. And I think Alder Tischler and I have both, you know, pointed out what some, the purpose of his alternate is. As far as I know, I haven't talked to the mayor's office since we met this morning, early this morning, so I don't know what the mayor's position is. And so that's why this is drafted as an alternate at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Herentemackini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this a combination of discussion? Am I in order? I just want to make sure that I'm in order. Okay, thank you. This is a lot in the basket, and I would like to thank Alder Martinez-Rutherford for at least seconding it, because had she not seconded it, we would not have even had this discussion. This is a lot in the basket, and I'm really glad that it is before the executive committee, because that's, this is exactly where things like this should be sorted out, discussed, and really come to some clarity. If people like me, I own it, I was totally confused as what the process was. But I was allowed to hear what Alder Tischler's explanation is. I was allowed to hear the explanation from the attorney to help me to better understand where we are. And that, I see that as the role of the executive committee. And there's a lot in, lot in the basket in terms of the one year. And for an alder, as good and exceptional as that person may or may not be, is that when that person is elected to serve their constituents, it does take a while for that person to even understand and learn the process. It is helpful if there is someone that that alder is paired with to assist in making sure that that alder, whether it's a two-term alder or an even alder or a, an odd alder, will serve the constituents at the best of their ability. And so I'm glad that the alternate is before us. I would hope that there is further discussion. If there is confusion here, I am certain that when it goes to the floor at the council, there will be more confusion and explanation. And I would hope that we will be looking at what is best for the council going forward and focus on that, rather than our own personal feelings one way or the other. Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Duncan?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question with regards to the two-thirds vote. What would happen, Attorney Haas, if that fails? Will that seat just continuously be open until we were able to agree for the two-thirds vote on council?
Yes, I think it's, you know, similar to the council's current options. If the mayor proposes an appointment, the council can either accept it, approve it, or reject it. And so if it's not approved by two-thirds vote, then it would remain vacant. Until there was a new appointment.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. I wanted to give my thoughts. I don't believe right now that I would be supporting the alternate. I think that by putting and revising the language, it restricts the mayor's ability to appoint who she wants to the different committees, which is her right, as we learned previously in other council meetings, to the point of continuous overturn. Just because you are going to be appointing alders every year does not mean that that same alder that was on the committee the previous year will not be on the committee again the next year. So I think that, from my standpoint, providing the ability to have the mayor appoint who she wants and us as a council reviewing those options is the path that I feel is where I'm moving right now. But I just wanted to provide my thoughts around that.
Thank you, Vice President Duncan. Alder Tischler?
Yes, I just want to say, you know, with all due respect, and the mayor is not here, and I'm sure we'll have a discussion about this later on in the evening. We also serve on these committees, you know, for, the people who are serving on these committees are also representing the council. They are our eyes and ears on these committees, and they represent us. And I think that if we do find a situation where we cannot fill a space, I'm thinking of, you know, like our council president, you know, when there's automatically, there's committees that the council president is placed on. And so when we elect the council president, we're automatically, you know, putting a lot of extra work on that individual. So in situations like that, where it's, you know, if it's, you know, an even-numbered alder serving as council president, or an odd-numbered person serving as council president, we may need to come together and discuss who should serve to fill in that spot. Those would be the situations that I see. But I don't think we should ever get to a spot where one of us among 20 are not able to serve. They're not, again, there's not always, we may not always have the committees that we want. But we always, there should be enough of us to be available to serve on the committees that need us present. So that's really why that's in there. It's looking at those situations where we will be adding, where there are those conflicts. But I don't think that's gonna be happening too often. And again, we are on these committees, these are subcommittees of the council, and we're on these committees to represent the council and to have voices that can come back and speak when we are in session as a council to explain what has happened on those committees, boards, committees, commissions. Not all of us have the time to watch everything. And sometimes we rely on ourselves in the council to support why, what happened in those BCCs and why they voted the way they did. That has an enormous amount of weight, and so that's why I wanted just to bring that point up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Gury?
Chair, and I want to thank Alder Tischler for bringing this forth, because I think it's provoked an important conversation. However we decide, continuity is certainly important. My concern would be that by staggering the terms, as we've already stated, that we've now put the mayor in a position to propose committee changes on an annual basis, as opposed to biannually. And it'll be a bigger task, even if people, or a significant number of people have two-year appointments. And I think, well, the goal here is to look at how can we promote some level of continuity by having these odd-numbered and even-numbered district situations. I think, just looking for me at the mathematics, how many permutations there are that the mayor has to then consider, because there will be more as a result of this. I think it makes the process somewhat more difficult. But in the motion, in the proposal as originally presented, there is nothing preventing the mayor from trying to imbue the structure with a certain amount of continuity. There is no requirement in there that everybody be changed and switched in musical chairs once a year. There's a lot of opportunities for continuity. What I think becomes somewhat more difficult, just aside from the mathematical number of permutations, is that there are considerations other than the sort of time it takes for new alders. And not all will be new in each election. Some will be, you know, serving another term or two. That the other thing that we like to consider is what is the expertise that are brought to the particular committees? You know, we could easily, at least for me, it's easy to imagine a scenario where we have somebody with a two-year appointment and someone new comes in, or it now is in the staggered term, who actually has more expertise that they could bring to the committee, but isn't available under certain circumstances with the restrictions here. So I think it's, continuity is important in terms of length of time on the council and on committees, but I think the expertise that different people bring, all of the different superpowers that we all have, and the mayor tries to align with the various committees and discussions with those people. I think it will just be harder. But that nothing in the original proposal really prevents continuity from happening. I think it's just, we've made it more complex perhaps by doing this. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other comments, feedback? Alder Tischler?
I'll just say, this is, again, this is a forward-looking document. You know, we can get assurances from our current mayor that there will be balance, there will be fairness, there will be the opportunity to recognize what, I guess, the superpowers that each one of us bring to the council. But again, I'm looking at, looking down the road, you know, two years from now, six years from now. You know, will we always have that kind of reassurance? And so, again, this is just not, this is, what I'm proposing is this is not gonna have an automatic reset every year. This is an opportunity to add some continuity for those of us who are committing to a two-year term. And also, I think this, in many ways, it will put some of the responsibility back onto us to have conversations and to decide who is the best fit. And so that's why I'm proposing it. So I don't think this is making it more complicated. If the council, you know, will come together and decide on who is best fit and recognizing that there are times that, you know, we may need to make some adjustments. And that puts us back onto us. You know, two-thirds of us decide, then we have an opportunity to make a recommendation from the council, who should best serve in a committee. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I don't see any other hands at this moment. I'm just gonna throw that out there, like the discussion we had this morning, this meeting. So at the end of the meeting, my suggestion was that this does belong on the CCEC meeting, and perhaps instead of, we should give this new staggering situation, give, I don't even want to say the mayor, because the person who's actually does this is the mayor's staff, which is Lila. So give her, Lila, a moment to readjust her processes, which are very convoluted. At this moment, they are not easy, they have to, you know, their schedules, there's, we have an ordinance that has tons of dates that we cannot have meetings, tons of things. I mean, like, there's a lot going on, so that, there's so many different variables on this process, and we don't have a tools in place to automate it. So for me, I think, again, my suggestion would be, again, to give her the time to adjust to the natural changes of the staggering terms and then have a resolution or something telling the future CCEC to continue to work on this and to continue to have the conversations, to have some small work group that just focuses on that. And then sometime before the next, the next change, the next election, we can present this to council and have those discussions. That was what I suggested this morning. So I think that, yeah, I mean, I'm interested to see what's gonna happen in council tonight, but that's where I am. I think there is, I understand the intention, but I'm concerned about Lila's already complicated situation, how we are going to restrict her more than she already has. That's my two cents. And I see Alder Herentemackini had her hand raised, so please go ahead, Alder.
Okay. Thank you very much, President Figo Cole. I appreciate what you just said, because this requires a lot of discussion and, you know, we perhaps will land eventually at the same level, but to introduce this and then have this brief discussion at the executive committee and then land it on the body to decide is problematic to me. And so I might be in order, and I really liked what you said in terms of having, I don't know if you said subcommittee or subgroup, but you indicated, you know, further discussion around this so that we can land on something that we can really present. And I don't know if it's in order, I don't know if it will pass, but I'd like to place this on file or to bring it back, or whatever the terminology is. But it is, it is something that we really should be delving into and really making some decisions. But I don't think that we have given it justice enough to go either way. I think that there is further discussion and conversation so that the product that we finally submit to our full body to make a vote on, we've already, you know, we've already done the work and answered the question so that we'll have a full product to present. I don't think this is fully baked, and I'm just not comfortable with how it's now going to go to the full body to make a decision. I think that there needs to be further value and discussion. I think that there needs to be further value and discussion in this so that we will have a product that can actually, could be workable. It is not going to be easy. It is going to be very, I'm not going to say traumatic. It is going to take a lot of effort to get this to a point where it feels good or it looks good or it's passable. But right now, it just doesn't fit, and I'm questioning whether we should hold this in the executive committee for further discussion, and if that is the case, to offer up to whatever the proper motion is to have this remain in the common executive committee for further discussion. And so, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Duncan.
Just a point of information. If we were to put this, place this on file, this does have to be decided before the new council is brought in, correct, President?
Alder, if both of the proposals are placed on file or not passed, we would have the current ordinance, which would mean for this year, after April, some alders would be appointed to a one-year term and some to a two-year term on the BCCs because the current ordinance says the appointments shall be concurrent with the respective aldermanic terms, so that we would continue with that ordinance in place.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. I see a hand up, but I don't know. Oh, oh, yeah, that's Alder. Vice President Duncan, you have your hands up. Okay. Okay, so, I don't see any other hands. The item on the table at this moment is, got to put my, do you have it?
The alternate.
Yeah, I just want to read it.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I got it. So, is for, Legis 85, 825, Tischler proposed amendment, or alternate, I'm sorry, Tischler proposed alternate to 85, 825. And the motion on the table is to adopt or not adopt. So, if someone...
My motion is to adopt the alternate.
To adopt the alternate.
So, it could either be passed, withdrawn, placed on file. It could be a vote or...
Or so one can offer a change to that thing, right? So, right now, the item on the table is to adopt the alternate. So, unless I see any hands or any discussion to Alder Conklin, your hand is up.
Yes, it is. Thank you, President. And I just wanted to clarify, it's Legis 86, 825.
86, 825, correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney, you're next on the queue.
I'm going to put forward a substitute to place this on file without prejudice and with the caveat that it comes back before the executive committee for further discussion.
So, is that going to be a motion?
The second, I'm sorry, Alder, the second piece of that, I think, is a little bit vague, so placing on file, well, the recommendation would be to the council to place on file. Whether or not something gets back on the CCCE agenda is, you know, up to the CCCE in the future. If you, you know...
But, but, I mean, she could, not on this motion, we can actually create a resolution to ask that, right, as a council maybe, at a later time?
Yeah, I mean, you're only...
You don't need to have a resolution, you just have to... But what, okay, this is what I was thinking, I'm sorry, this is what my thought was. For the BCCs, we directed CCCE to take that charge. So, it wasn't like, you know, we were told by resolution that we had to take that charge. So, it wasn't like an option for us to do it. And I think that's why Alder McKinney is trying to say, make it that it's not an option, that the next CCCE will take it, and I'm trying to get at to how does she accomplishes that? Now, does it, is it enough with attaching that language to this vote, or do we need a separate resolution at some point to make that happen?
Well, the duties of the CCCE include dealing with ordinances that have to do with the structure of the council and committees. So, this is a body that would entertain any change to that ordinance. It just would require somebody in a future date reintroducing or even CCCE just...
Oh, I see. So, she can reintroduce it and send it, and then forward to CCCE. Got it?
Or, yes, or CCCE could just take it up as a discussion, I demand its own.
Correct. Anybody can, got it. So, we don't have to create a new file. This file can be reintroduced to CCCE. Good. Got it? Okay, so the motion on the table is to put this on file. Is that clear, Alder McKinney?
Yes, it is, it's clear. And Madam Chair, you are headed in the right direction, and you probably can land this better than I've landed, but it is clear that there needs to be further discussion. And so, how this happens is something that I would ask the, ask you, and also ask the city attorney to help us to this space, because I don't think it is ready for that final decision. And I know that there's a short window within the time that this executive committee will be operating, but if we make this a priority, we really can take a look at this and bake it right. It's just still not baked right for me.
Okay.
On my hand.
Yeah, thank you. So, Alder Duncan.
I just had a question, a point of information. We would be putting Alder Tischler's alternate on file?
Without prejudice. Yes.
Without prejudice, okay.
Yes, so that's the vote in front of us, one step at a time. So, the vote in front of us is, I mean, the motion in front of us is to put the alternate on file without prejudice. And for that, do I have a second? Because I don't think we have a second yet.
Second.
And we had John, Alder Gary, second in that. So, with that said, then, let's just take a roll call on this, because I don't know where we are. So, please do that. Go ahead.
Vice President Duncan.
Aye.
Alder Govenderajan. Alder Conklin.
Aye.
Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Aye.
Alder Uguere.
Aye.
And Alder Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
So, with that said, that motion passed. Now, we're back to the original motion, amending section 3301/6 of the ordinance about the appointments, and this will be whatever was offered already there. So, we can, I need a, do we need a second for that again?
We already had one.
We already had one, because we already, that, this was cut. So, from where we are right now is, then we are open this backup up for discussion, and is, want to throw that out there, is almost 5:30. So, we can have a continued robust discussion on this, or we can just send it to council and continue the discussion there. So, with that said, any questions? And I don't know who was first on the line, so I'm going to go with Alder Tischler, because there are two systems, so I don't know who you were first, but go for it.
I guess my comment would be, since we placed the alternate on file, that maybe we should place this one on file so that the conversation can occur where it should be, I think, here on the CCCE.
Thank you. And then, the next person on the queue is Alder Harrington McKinney.
I would like to offer a substitute motion that this be placed on file without prejudice.
Okay, so we need a second for that. And we have a second on the floor. Okay?
Can I just point?
Okay. Hold on. We have a...
Okay, just so everybody's on the same page, I just want to reiterate, if this is, if the council places this on file, the mayor's office, and it's not revisited before the April election, and there's only a couple council meetings left, before that, the mayor's office will make appointments under the current existing ordinance, which will be appointments to BCCs are concurrent with the aldermanic terms, meaning that the odd-numbered districts will receive two-year terms in April, and the even-numbered districts will receive one-year terms on the BCCs going forward. So, just want to make sure everybody understands the effect of that.
So, Alder Harrington McKinney, your hand's up.
Yes, I have a question. With that explanation from the attorney, would it be in order if we put a return date? Is that in order? Because I know that we cannot have anything binding after the April, the first election, but can, how can this come back before? And I think that the, President, you would, you would have some control over that, you know, can we bring it back before the executive committee for further discussion within the short period of time that we have before the April 1st election?
We can, I mean, we can re-fer, is that what you're asking? So, that's, that's different than put it on file.
Okay.
So, you got, the recommendation to cancel could be, instead of killing it, could be, can we re-fer this to the next committee, to the whatever day committee that we have for CCCE?
Okay, that is a better, that's really where I want to go. I want to re-fer it, I want it to come back to the executive committee for further discussion, and then I think that we will be able to do a better solution out of the executive committee. I trust that we will be able to resolve this in, within the executive committee framework rather than to have this at the council meeting, which is going to be as convoluted as it has been in this discussion. So, if I could change that, can I now make a motion that this be re-refered, re-refered to the executive committee? And Karen, if you can help us with a date that the president will be agreeable to.
So, so Haas, we take that back? The motion was to put on file? Without prejudice, we that, that's canceled?
No, because, I mean, that was, to put it on file, the alternate...
No, I mean, the second one too.
Oh, okay. Correct. I'm sorry. Yes. I think that if the preference is simply to re-fer it, it'd probably be cleanest...
Yes, to remove that, to withdraw the motion.
...to place it on file. Second agrees with that. You can have the motion re-refer. We would just need to have the motion to re-refer specify which of the next two remaining council meetings you wanted to come back to CCCE and the council, and then the council would act on that tonight.
So, then Alder, Alder Harrington McKinney, and John, I see your hand, but give me one second. Alder Harrington McKinney, are you retracting your motion to...
I retract my motion to place on file.
Okay.
And I also wrote the, refer back to the executive committee, and I would trust the president of the council to help us with the date.
Okay. So, are you okay?
The president of the, excuse me, the president of the executive committee to help us with the date.
Okay, so we're back now with the new motion on the table is to recommend to cancel, to re-fer this to CCCE of March 11th.
And then back to council.
And then back to council on 3/11.
You want to do 3/11?
Yeah, because that would be too far.
Okay.
Because she, yeah, 3/11. That's the motion. The motion is to recommend to change the, to re-referral to CCCE on 3/11 and to cancel meeting on 3/11, and then the 20 of us later can deal with that. But I have, before we move on that motion, oh, I'm sorry, do we have a second on that motion? We have a second, MGR. Okay, now we're in discussion, and Alder Tischler, you go.
Yes, thank you. Just a point of clarification, with the alternate placed on file, how would that be brought back for discussion?
It's placed on file without prejudice, so...
So, it would be brought back?
Yeah.
To the council, or should that be placed, also re-fer along with this, since it's...
It could be brought back for discussion by the CCCE.
Okay.
Along with the discussion about the other, the main motion.
Okay. I will make myself available to come back and speak to this committee as much time as needed.
All right. Sounds, well, that's what we're going to recommend to cancel. So, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to take a leap of faith. Is there any objection on recorded unanimous vote on that? I don't see any hands. One, two, three. Okay, so with that, we pass that motion.
Can I just ask, is there any information that CCCE would like staff to bring back for your consideration, or is it only a matter of...
Discussion.
You having more discussion about it?
I think more discussion, and then I would definitely would like for, like, I would invite Lila, for example, to get feedback from her to, like, make sure that we understand the process, just like we did for the CCCE.
BCC?
BCCs, thank you. Yeah, so, okay. So, with that, Alder Govenderajan, you have a question? Because we just passed that motion, but go on.
To answer Attorney Haas' question, I guess I would love for staff to bring some information on how other cities similar to us might do an appointment process.
I mean, I can probably 90% tell you that no other city has this situation. Well, first of all, no other city deals obviously with the number of committees that we have. You might have five to 10 committees in other cities, which consists of all alders. And the question I don't know is how others, if other cities have staggered terms, so that may be a legitimate question. We could ask the council office to research.
As long as I...
What's that? Fishbord does? Okay.
Thank you.
Alder, I mean, Attorney Haas, there's other line, other people on the queue with their eyes. I mean, we finished with that discussion.
It's so far.
Can we go? Okay, thank you. I don't want to. Okay, next person on the queue, Alder Curry.
Could we have either a report from Leila, staff in the mayor's office about her role in BCCs? I heard her brought up during discussion and possibly making her job a little bit more challenging. Would that be possible?
Yes.
For us to understand what her role is?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'd like to also offer that Middleton has a staggered term, and the reference was is that, was there any other municipality experiencing that? And so, that would be good to have their reflection on how they handle their appointments since they are on staggered terms.
Yep. I mean, and I, Fishbord also has that information, so I could definitely connect with them myself, because I have, but they're very small, so, but we can ask for sure. Thank you. Already, so, it is already 6:35, and I, I mean, 5:35, I'm getting ahead of myself here. I'm going to skip some of these items. Karen, do you want to just give a quick overview so we can get us to the last, to the adjournment?
Yeah, I think briefly, we're on the cusp of heading pretty deeply into alder onboarding prep, so that's what we'll be working on, I think, pretty solidly between now and then. We already started, but, and then you may notice, some folks who have been here long enough may remember our fragrance-free workplace sign that existed before COVID. I think when the, during the pandemic, when they repainted the halls on the fourth floor, they removed it, and it never quite made its way back. You'll notice it, it's coming back, so you'll see it on the, outside the doorway to the hall, so, just the short, short version, I guess.
Okay. Already, so, again, I don't want to be on staff way to prepare for the next meeting, so unless there's anything else you guys want to bring up, announcements or whatever, I don't see any, any hands raised. One, two, three. I will, I will take an adjournment motion. I will, I will take an adjournment motion from...
I'll take the adjournment.
Okay, can I get a second on that? Okay, Alder Harrington McKinney got the second. Is there a objection on recording unanimous vote against adjourn, I mean, in favor of adjournment? I want to stay here. I don't see, oh, Alder Tischler, you have a question?
My mic is still hot.
Okay, then, with this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.